All right, it's 7:06 PM on Wednesday, May 7, 2025. The Twila City Council is meeting in a business meeting. This meeting is being held at the Twila City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Twila, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Twila City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our second item is a roll call. Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
She's still joining us by phone, and we apologize for the connectivity issues. And I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. We will move on to item three, which is our public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the microphone. You keep your comments to three minutes or less. And then there's a paper over by Michelle that we ask that you sign. The time is now the public's.
Hello. My name is Glenn Turnbow, and I am coming in behalf of, to make a comment about the item, agenda item 2025-23 that was approved on April 2, 2025. First off, thank you for doing that. Really excited to see that change happening. However, there is a little bit of concern that I have that I don't know if it has been considered, and I couldn't tell from the designs. There has been a current, a current, as in the water flow problem, with how the lazy river portion of the pool empties into that splash pad area. My biggest concern is that the water, as it is currently, aims right at the pole, the first pole. And so the concern is when they are making this change, where they place the slide. If it's at, if that water current is hitting the slide, people, one are going to be floating into the bottom of the slide. The other concern is when the kids come down the slide, they'll be pinned against the slide by that forceful water. And I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't happen. My kids are really excited about the slide. So placement is a thing there. Probably a bigger concern is the way it comes out, which would require some bigger changes than what was originally planned. But I just want to make sure that we place it in a good spot so that we don't have to have a problem in the future. I'm happy to share more information. I'll share my contact information over here, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the time is still the public's. Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public comment period. Just so Glenn knows, I don't have the answer to that right now, but Darwin Cook, he's in the blue shirt back there. He's the Parks and Recreation Director, and I think he would be a great one to discuss that with, and we're more than happy to follow up with you as well. We're going to move on to item four, which is an introduction of the 2024-2025 Library Teen Advisory Council. This is presented by Chase Randall, the library director.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to come before you today to present. So this last year, we had a volunteer group that we called the Teen Advisory Council, or TAC for short. This consists of teen volunteers who assist our programs team with putting on various programs, as well as doing a small service project for the library. Their big thing that they did this last year was the stuffed animal sleepover, where kids got to come in and bring their stuffed animal and leave the stuffed animal at the library overnight. And then my programs team, working with the Teen Advisory Council, they had the stuffed animals, they watched a movie, they read books, and they took pictures and videos of the stuffed animals having fun at the library. And I can personally attest that my two kids, who are five and three, loved it, and they were totally enthralled, wanting to see, okay, oh, that's my stuffed animal, so very cute. And so I'd just like to take a second and turn time over to Kayla and Alyssa, who are my awesome program specialists at the library. They're going to tell a little bit more about the Teen Advisory Council. And then if we could just do a picture and celebrate the fact that they volunteered this last year, and then we'll start up a, so it's ending now with the school year. So, thank you.
I am Kayla Cameron, and I have Alyssa Ensland with me. We are both on the programs team at the library. And as such, we are also the advisors of our TAC. So I want to introduce each of them and tell you a little bit about their favorite programs and why they enjoy being on our Teen Advisory. So first, I have Colin. Colin, if you'll stand. This is Colin Lawrence. His parents are Jennifer and Adrian Lawrence. His favorite teen program that he's ever attended, we started up D&amp;D, Dungeons and Dragons, recently, and he has been a part of it since its inauguration. So we've been doing it for over a year now, and he has been one of the first to that has helped. He really enjoys playing D&amp;D in his free time, and so it's something that he really enjoys doing with other teens that he may not have a chance to do otherwise. One of the things that he really likes about it is that he gets to be creative in a way that doesn't allow him to be creative in real life. So you can pretend and do all the things that you need to do, and they have a lot of time, a lot of fun in there. I know Colin personally has a story with a lemon that you could probably ask him about, but unless you don't D&amp;D, it's, it's the D&amp;D thing. But part of D&amp;D is scheduling. That will be your biggest constraint with your friends, so he enjoys that we are able to have a consistent D&amp;D campaign. I've asked him all what their favorite teen activity that they plan. So as a TAC member, they're allowed to plan and help with our teen programs. So in the winter, we had one called the Winter Craft, where we made snowmen out of socks and made different types of snowflakes and just was really creative. So it was really cute and a really fun thing to do right before Christmas. I asked him why he liked that so much, and he said that it was his first program that he ever helped plan. And he enjoyed doing something creative with his hands. He loves being on TAC because he gets to plan, and it's fun. He gets to interact and see other teens with teen time and the TAC members. He liked the planning portion of it because he's at an age where he's going to start planning his own stuff, and so that it helps him learn to plan for his future. Thank you, Colin. The next TAC member that I have is Josie Prescott. Josie, will you please stand? Thank you. Her parents are Julie and Dustin Prescott. Her favorite teen party, or teen program that she attended was our Halloween party. So I had a little bit of input from my teens about what they wanted to do and just planned out an activity that would be fun. So they got to dress up, and she enjoyed it because it was just kind of a cool way to hang out and play some games and enjoy each other's company without having anything else to do. Her favorite planned activity was we did Princess and the Frog interactive movie. So we've been doing a lot of interactive movies in the past, but this was the first one that she got to plan. She really liked that because she got to set up what the interactive parts were, and it's one of her favorite movies, and she got to share it with others in a fun way. Josie is also one of our returning TAC members, and she loves being on TAC because she gets to connect with the members of TAC and an excuse to go to the library more often. Thank you. And finally, our last TAC member is Paige Bradfield. Paige, will you stand? Thank you. Her parents are John and Christie Bradfield. Her favorite teen program that she attended was when we did the Haunted Historic Park. So at the beginning, she is also a returning TAC member, and we had our TAC members help decorate our area for the library and then had them dress up in inflatable costumes and just kind of help everybody. So her favorite thing was that, and she said that it was fun to set up and dress up and see everyone outside of the library. The favorite activity that she planned was the mythological jeopardy. So we had a jeopardy where we just had it all about mythology. We have a lot of teens that are interested in that sort of thing, and Paige was one of them. She knows a lot about it, and it was good to put her knowledge in a fun and creative way that other people could enjoy as well. And she loves being on TAC because she likes being part of the community and adores the other TAC members. Thank you, Paige. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. This is our 2024-2025 TAC. Thank you.
If we could get a quick picture.
Yeah. Do you want to go in the rotunda real fast, take a picture? Okay. We'll move on to item five, which is Resolution 2025-31, a resolution of the Twila City Council appointing Shiloh Baker as city recorder of Twila City. This is presented by Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
Thank you, chairman and council. Little bit of bittersweet news at the beginning of this presentation, and back on March 5, we received a beautiful letter, again, bittersweet letter, from Michelle Peatt, who is our Twila City Recorder. And she informed us that she is going to be retiring on July 16. So her last working day here at City Hall will be July 15. And Michelle has served as the recorder for 14 years, but has been at the city even longer than that and served as the assistant to the mayor. So she has performed her duties wonderfully, and again, we're sad that she's leaving us, but we are very excited for retirement for her because that's what we all work for, is to get to that retirement where we can enjoy our lives instead of working all the time. So the Twila City Charter provides that the city council, with the advice of the mayor, shall select the city recorder, who will be the clerk of the council. And after working with two members of the city council and conducting interviews, my recommendation to you is to have you appoint Shiloh Baker as the city recorder for Twila City. So Shiloh, will you come up for just a moment? Shiloh has worked for Twila City as the administrative assistant to the mayor for 14 years. She loves Twila City, and she doesn't just say that, she lives it. She loves our city. She's a dedicated employee. She is always looking for ways to improve anything that needs to be done, and that is not just her job, but any way that she feels that we can improve, she's looking. And customer service is huge for me. And when I was elected mayor and came in, I talked to the employees and said how important communities, or the customer service was that we give to our community, and it's just important. And so I wanted to say something about the customer service skills that Shiloh has. There is no word that will describe. I found exceptional, brilliant, admirable. Those don't even begin to say how she takes care of people. And I have literally listened to her talk to someone on just a very minor problem, and she's talked to them for 45 minutes to help them through and understand why and what, and make them feel better about what's going on. Shiloh works with all of our departments and has, and I can tell you honestly, there is nothing that she cannot do. She will find a way to make sure that it is done. So I know that this is the person who should be not only the city recorder, but she will also serve as the city's purchasing agent and records officer. We are bringing this to you tonight, although she will not be sworn in until the 16th of July, which is the day that Michelle will be gone. So we are bringing this to you tonight so we can get into place the, a recommendation that we can move forward, because I'm not going to say fill her shoes, because you're not going to fill her shoes. Someone else is going to just have to come in and do their job the way that they will do it, because it will never be Shiloh. But she's just going to be across the halls. So we're bringing this to you tonight for your vote and your support.
Thank you. We're super excited for you, Shiloh. We know he'll do great, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll.
I was going to say, after you vote, I'm going to ask her to say something.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll vote first, and then, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025. Sorry. I apologize, Michelle, because I turned it off. It was doing something else. Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-31, a resolution of Twila City Council adopting Shiloh Baker, appointing Shiloh Baker as a city recorder of Twila City.
And I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Okay, now we'll let Shiloh.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I just want to thank the mayor for her very kind words and for her support and for her leadership over the last seven and a half years, almost seven and a half years. I want to thank each of you, the council, for your support in this appointment, and I do love Twila City. I do love our residents. I love the staff and the employees of the city. They work hard. They are dedicated to making our community a better place to live and one that we're proud to call home. And I will do this job probably not as well as Michelle. She is great, and, but I will try every day to work hard for our community and to serve the people of Twila City. Thank you.
Thanks, Shiloh.
Yes.
Item six is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-11, an ordinance of the Twila City Council to approve a zoning map amendment request by Perry Holmes to consider approval for the Compass Point RSD zoning ordinance and to reassign the zoning for 1,227 acres located from approximately 1,000 north to the city's northern boundary and from 1,200 west to approximately Barra Boulevard from the R17 residential and GC general commercial zoning districts to the Compass Point RSD zoning district presented by Andrew Agard, the community development director.
Thank you, Chairman Brady, members of the city council. This item was brought to you at a work session, I believe it was your last work session meeting, and was presented to you. And just for the sake of the public that may be tuning into this meeting, I'd like to give a brief overview of the RSD and what's being requested. The RSD is a residential special district. The applicant is Perry Holmes. It will affect approximately 1,227 acres, and will, it is anticipated that 3,600 units will be constructed in approximately 50 acres of open space. This is an aerial map showing the proposed location of the Compass Point RSD. The area affected by this is highlighted in red. It extends from 1,000 north to the city's boundary with Eerta City, and then from approximately 1,200 west to approximately 400 west and Barra Boulevard. The current zoning of the subject properties is R17 residential. There is some general commercial located at the northeast corner, just a small strip of it there, that will also be rezoned if the rezon is to be approved. The land use designation of the subject property is MDR, which is medium density residential. The overall density of the Compass Point development at buildout would be approximately two units per acre, well within the requirements of the medium density residential designation. And this is the zoning as it would appear when the zoning is adopted. The dark red is the Compass Point RSD. The area that you see as tan with the hatch pattern is an area that would also be included in the Compass Point RSD, but is held aside just in case at the time the developer doesn't have the units to fill that residentially. So they've left that a different color to indicate that there may be a different use of that many years down the road. I'd like to just go through briefly what the RSD actually entails, and the applicant is here, and so the council can ask them questions if they have any. The Compass Point RSD would be organized into areas designed as villages and planned to integrate a variety of housing types. The purpose of the RSD is to give them the flexibility to develop their property and have some design flexibility instead of being stuck within the confines of rigid zoning. This does provide some architectural and open space and landscaping design elements that they can work with. One point I wanted to make is that the developer does intend to contribute to Twila City at no cost, approximately three acres, for the benefit of a fire station. So that language is included in the RSD. They are proposing approximately 50 acres of open space. The RSD does also include language that states the developer will be dedicating that land to the city for development as parks and open space at no cost to the city. The city will then need to bear the cost of developing those parks and open space. The RSD includes development standards specific for that development, so lot size, lot width, lot setbacks, and so forth, will be governed by the RSD. And they are proposing a variety of unit types or housing types to go within the development. There'll be some townhomes, front-loaded and rear-loaded. There'll be some courtyard homes. There'll be some small lot garden style, both front-load and rear-loaded, as well as some traditional homes, and then all the way up to ranch-style homes, very large lots and large homes. The RSD also has its own permitted and conditional uses defined within the document. It also defines its own architectural standards. Again, these architectural standards are designed to provide the applicant with flexibility in their product. They also will be, the RSD will also govern street and parking design standards, although I should say that the parking is very similar to the city's current requirements. Landscape design standards are also defined within the RSD. These landscape design standards have been provided to the North Twila Special Service District, and I believe it is still their intention to annex the property into the North Twila Special Service District, and they are working on that currently. The RSD contains its own fencing standards and will also define many of the cross-sections. I should state for the record that the city staff and the applicant have worked closely to make sure that the road and street cross-sections comply with the state requirements, meet all of the emergency vehicle requirements, snowplows, and so forth. So we're confident that the road sections will satisfy all of the city's codes and standards. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at its April 23, 2025, meeting and voted unanimously to recommend in favor of the RSD. And we are here today before the city council to get your approval for this RSD. Staff has worked very closely with the developer. We are confident that this will be a good document for the future, especially for this large area. It will take 20 to 30 years to develop. This is the first of its kind for our city, so there might be some kinks that we have to work out, but we are confident that we can work those out with the developer and make sure this property develops the way we want to see it develop. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions or comments? Just for the recorded record, Councilwoman Manzio is here now in person, so welcome. Okay, this is an item that we've discussed many times and a lot of history that goes along with this. I know some residents hear this, and it's kind of a shock to them, but this has been an ongoing thing that has been planned for quite some time, and I think I'm excited to see the plan as it comes to fruition. And I really love the trails and the open space, the fire station shows that we're planning for the future, we're looking ahead on the growth that we'll have in the northwest end of town. So any other comments or questions? Okay, this has a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public. We ask that you state your name into the microphone. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper over by Michelle and Loretta. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve ordinance 2025-11, an ordinance of the Twila City Council to approve a zoning map amendment request by Perry Holmes to consider approval of the Compass Point RSD zoning ordinance and to reassign the zoning for 1,237 acres located from approximately 1,000 north to the city's northern boundary and from 1,200 west to approximately Barra Boulevard from R17 residential and GC general commercial and zoning districts to the Compass Point RSD zoning district.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item seven is a public hearing and motion on Resolution 2025-24, a resolution of the Twila City Council approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, presented by Shannon Wimmer, the finance director.
Good evening, council. You should have a copy of the budget amendments in your packet. We usually bring these before you about once a quarter, just to kind of clean up items that come through as regular business during the year that affect the budget. You'll see that most of these are just operating items, such as grants that we have received and just cleanup items. There is one item that I did want to point out, and that's item number 36, and that is to establish your 1,000 north CRA area. So that area has triggered and did receive tax increment this year, so you will see in your budget books, you now have a 74 fund, which is where we will track the increment and the expenditures for that 1,000 north CRA area. And beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, this also has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. State your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Michelle and Loretta. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025, a resolution of Tuilla City Council approving the budget amendments for fiscal year 2024-25. I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goachis and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item eight is resolution 2025-25, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council tentatively adopting the Budget Officer's Tentative Budget for Tuilla City fiscal year 2025 through 2026 and establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption, presented by Mayor W. Nguyen.
Thank you, council. As the budget officer, I have worked very hard with our staff and also with you a couple of months ago when we met and talked about what we wanted to see within the budget. And we have tonight for you a tentative budget for you to adopt. You are receiving the copy of that tonight, so you've not had a chance to look at it, but I will let you know that you are receiving a copy of the budget that has all of the individual line items for each department. That's the budget that we work off of to see what's in each line item and which budget, but that is very difficult for the public to understand. It's just a bunch of lines and numbers. But a couple of years ago, we created a new budget book for the public, which is much easier to understand, but it also includes some really important information about our city. So this will eventually be put online for everyone to see, but there will be a copy of it also in the recorder's office. So there will be one now with the tentative budget and then after the budget is adopted, it will be updated to say that this is the budget. And so I just want to let the public know, it's a beautiful, really a beautiful publication and I really am appreciative, first of all, of the department heads getting their information in and then Shannon getting all of the finance information in and Kami with the HR. It takes a lot to get all the information, but then it is organized and designed by Shiloh and Clarissa, so I appreciate all of their help to get that done. So I'm honored to present to you the tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 to 26. This document reflects the collaborative efforts and many hours of hard work, careful planning and open discussions by our city staff, administration and the city council. Our budget process is designed to provide essential services and valuable amenities to the community in a manner that prioritizes public transparency and accountability. Maintaining and improving the quality of life for our residents remains a top priority and I continue to commit to making Tuilla City a place where people are proud to live, work and play. This year's budget is based on adopting the certified tax rate. Tuilla City will not be proposing a tax increase this year. Road projects are a priority every year and this budget allocates funds for the improvement and replacement of our road inventory. We continue to work to secure additional water resources and have invested funds to increase the efficiency of our current wells. England Acres Park completion continues to be a priority. Phase three of this project has begun and is expected to be completed in fiscal year 26. Additional projects such as a restroom facility at Veterans Park and a new Boulevard Bike Park will be added to our park amenities. We continue to provide funding for the Tuilla City Arts Council and invest in community traditions such as the Fourth of July Celebration and Friday's On Vine Concert Series. As part of the fiscal year 26 budget, we are prioritizing investments in our workforce to better serve the growing needs of our community. Recognizing that employees are the foundation of quality, service, delivery, we are adding some needed positions in areas such as public safety and public works. Employee costs, including salaries, benefits and equipment for new hires, are an important and strategic investment in the long-term health and vitality of Tuilla City. I would like to sincerely thank our finance director, Shannon Wimmer, executive assistant, Shiloh Baker, human resource director Kami Perkins and the department heads for the many hours spent in preparation of this budget. I wanted to also give you a couple of highlights of what is included in this budget. We are asking for some new employee positions, including a full-time utility service technician. This is in the finance department but supports the water department in putting in the water meters and reading the meters. We have done an extensive parks and cemetery restructure and we have outsourced maintenance for the cemetery. So we have combined the parks cemetery, it is all one department, but now we are combining those two organizations with the employees so that we can give better coverage to our parks and take better care of our parks. We're doing an excellent job, but we are really growing in the parks department as you see with England Acres and the brand-new Wigwam Park and the added amenities to each one take more employees. So we are doing this restructure. We are also asking for a public works assistant director, which will also help with public works, another huge department that has many employees and many different facets that are important to be taken care of. We are asking for three full-time police officers. One of these people, officers will be serving as the SRO, the School Resource Officer for the new Deseret Peak High School. We know that we need to continue to bring in more of our police officers. We also unfortunately have increased the time for the victim advocate. She cannot get everything done in 30 hours a week and unfortunately, again, there are just too many victims out there. She does an excellent job. We would like to increase her hours to 40 hours a week and make her full-time. We are also recommending a 2% cost of living increase for the employees. We have included a tier-two pickup for public safety and that resolution will be presented later. There is this year an increase in the judgment levy bond payment. You know that, it is more than doubling, but we have been able to absorb that in the budget with the payoff of the MBA bond for City Hall, the Aquatic Center, the animal shelter and the golf course. That all was paid off, so that money will be attributed for that increase in that levy payment. We have many projects, many, that we would like to do, but I just want to highlight a few of the projects and equipment requests that are included in the budget. For the fire department, we need to increase the number of SCBA packs and bottles and also some additional hazmat response gear. We are also reserving in the budget $500,000 to be used for a lease-to-purchase option for additional fire trucks. We are working with the company to get some numbers put together, but the $500,000 will be a way to get us started and then be able to make those payments with each additional budget for the next several years. We are going to need more equipment and more fire trucks and we need to start now. We are also continuing the zero-scaping at the library. It is saving us money already on water, not having to do that, and eventually I would like to see every city property as if we're not using the park or the grass for recreation, that we put something else there, so we're not wasting the water. We're also going to replace the library chiller this year. We have additional vehicles and equipment for the parks department to support that restructure that we're doing, need some more vehicles. We are also needing to replace all of the tasers at the police department. They are very outdated and they are failing. We have to keep this in our community and be able to supply that to our police officers. We are recommending improvements at the public works campus, which will include repairs to the shop building to keep it up to shape for several more years and also to improve some of their parking areas. And we would like to begin replacement of some of the old chain-link kennels that are down at the animal shelter and replace them with polymer kennels. Obviously, this is a very short list, but you will see items in the budget that we are requesting for approval. It is planned to bring back the budget to you for a final adoption on the 18th day of June, which is just about six weeks away, and we will meet here at 7 o'clock at City Hall. 10 days before that meeting, we will have the public notices out and again, the budget will be, the copy will be in the recorder's office, so that anyone that may want to look at it, we will also post it online so people can take a look at what the budget is. So I am presenting this tonight for you to consider its adoption.
Okay, we just got the budget, but is there any questions, comments?
Lots going on.
Lots going on, yes.
A big budget?
I just wanted to talk in our, we had a budget retreat, I guess you could call it. We retreated to the large conference room upstairs, so it wasn't a retreat anywhere. Nice, but in that meeting, we decided that we did not want to raise taxes, but with that clarification, I want the residents to understand there's other entities that have the potential or the option to raise taxes as well. We're trying to get out to the public that Tuilla City is a different entity than Tuilla County or Stansbury Park and I don't know if they'll raise taxes or not, but oftentimes other entities raise taxes and Tuilla City gets a lot of the repercussions for that. So we were trying to get that information out early that we have no intention of raising taxes this year and I think a lot of that goes back to the responsibility that we managed this budget really well over the last couple of years and Mayor Nguyen's done a great job, so thank you. That's my only comment. Any other comments? Okay.
I will make a comment. You left out the school board because they raise taxes and we get hit for them as well. But one thing I wanted to say since we're talking to the public is that I hope that everybody truly understands, even though that we are not intending to raise taxes, the problem with a municipality not raising taxes, it means you run short of funds or things that you can do. I commend the mayor and the staff for allowing us to get everything done that we're going to do, because it's very expensive to bring on, say, like she said, three police officers. That's really expensive, but we need them. I mean, it's not like it was back in the 90s. Tuilla's grown and we need them. I don't want to have to say it again, but I'm gonna say it again. We need the police to be here and it costs to do that. And just keep in mind that the roads that we complain about, some of the other things that we complain about, it takes money to make that happen and the money comes from your tax dollars. And if we don't raise taxes, that means that's something that's not going to get done, that probably should get done. And if it doesn't get done this year, it's definitely going to need to be done next year or the year after. So I just want to make sure, I just want to throw that out there so that the citizens hear that, because, oh yeah, yeah, they're not raising taxes. But keep in mind, on the backside, it might be something that probably should get done that's not getting done. So you can be happy today, but you might not be happy next week because we might have to raise them next year, just so you know. Everything costs money. Sorry, I just had to let it out, say it, I just had to.
I have a comment too. I would like to thank the staff and the mayor for working hard. I think we have a good fiscal management policies and we work really hard to spend our taxpayer money wisely because we're taxpayers also. We live in the city and we pay the taxes that everybody else pays, so we know what it's like to raise taxes and I'm glad we don't have to this year, but I'd like to just give a little shout-out also to our city for our focus on economic development because our focus on economic development is really helping us be in a better place. And although growth comes with a lot of hardships and, you know, busy roads and all the things that come with growth, one of the good things that comes with growth is more of the economic development and that brings more tax money to our tax base, which means it doesn't fall on our residents as much. So I think kudos, you know, to the city for the focus on economic development and growth. I mean, well-managed growth is important to our community so that we can be in a better place financially and I think we're getting there.
So since we're just getting this, over the next two weeks, my plan, and hopefully you all agree, is we'll just review it and then in our work meeting, we will have a budget discussion. If we need to have additional budget meetings, we can do that as well. So like Mayor said, we have till June 16, I think it was.
18.
18, sorry, 16th, 18th. Okay, 18th. But yeah, if you feel like we need to have additional meetings, just let us know and we will, so, okay. Let's see, I will...
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-25, tentatively adopting the Budget Officer's Tentative Budget for Tuilla City fiscal year 2526 and establishing the time and place of a public hearing to consider its adoption.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCall.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item nine is our third quarter economic development update, since we talked about it and now we get to hear about the great things that are going on. This is presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, council. So this is the third quarter of FY '25, so this is January 1st through the 31st of March. Some of the data wasn't available for the first meeting in April, hence why we're having it now. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So just to kind of recap, some of the grand openings that we had, we had a Wingstop grand opening and then we also had the Home Two Suites by Hilton, that's off 1,000 north just west of Main Street, so that was exciting, the first Hilton chain hotel within the city. And then this next one is the vacancy rates. This shows quarter one and then the percent change for quarter two, so you'll see very little change in retail and office, no change in office, and then a little bit on the better side, 1% decrease for industrial. And you might say, you know, what can be attributed to that? And just kind of being in regular contact with, for example, Peterson Industrial Depot, you see, you know, leases expire, people coming and going for some of the smaller businesses, so that could kind of perhaps be attributed to that. And then you'll see hospitality, that's the vacancy rates for the hotels within the city and then also the other one within the county. And you'll see it just went up a little bit in regards to vacancy, but that can be attributed this time of year from when it was the holidays, you tend to see more family visiting, so that's still a very healthy percentage. And then this is the lead generating pipeline, so you'll see three restaurant contacts made, three retail hospitality, four RFIs and then one RFI visit. And then this is kind of a summary for Founder's Point for 1,000 north and SR36. You'll see Chipotle, Wingstop and those have both opened now and then Chili's, Hobby Lobby, Ulta Beauty, Five Below, TJ Maxx, Sierra Trading Post, Bath &amp; Body Works and then some kind of new ones to the bucket are Cafe Zupas and Zhao Asian Cafe, which I know some people are quite excited about, so that's great. And then this is the Peak at Compass Point, so this is 2,400 north and SR36. So as of now, we've kind of, we know Smith's Marketplace, Smith's Fuel Center, Jersey Mikes has submitted some stuff to community development and then Beans &amp; Brew's Coffee House, Chase Bank and Tropical Smoothie. Yay, healthier options, right? And then this next one is, the RDA is working on an updated conceptual map for the Tuilla Business Park, so this includes the area where Lightner Poma is and also where the Utah State Tuilla Campus is located. And you might say, well, wasn't a map done a couple of years ago with CRS? And the answer is yes, but if you really look at it from a rail standpoint, is it realistic? If you look at it from an ownership standpoint, the different parcels, and you look at it from a road standpoint, it's really not conducive. It's almost more of a, in some cases, I might use the expression a piecemeal kind of operation. This new concept is really taking into consideration the kind of unrealisticness of, you know, an integrated rail spur into the park. It takes into consideration utility... It takes into consideration utilities, it takes into consideration elevation differences and grading that would be required. It takes into consideration future planning of roads, so, and zoning and updating some of the zoning as it gets closer to the residential. So this is exciting. It's been going on for the past couple of months. We just received another, some other, more revisions last week. So it's a very much so a team effort, myself, the mayor, Community Development, the city engineer, Public Works, everybody's very involved, and there's lots of hands-on this to make sure this really is a good concept that we can push when we do market it and, you know, send it out to prospects from EDC Utah and GOEO and, you know, entities like that. And I'd also like to note, this is a, this is a, this, we were able to receive a discounted rate on this concept, so it's under $20,000, because that SOMAS is contracted with EDC Utah to get, to be able to get a discounted rate, so we were able to save some money there as well. And then, so, EDC Utah, we submitted two RFIs, we're still in the third stage evaluation for one RFI submitted in Q3, currently in fourth stage evaluation for RFI submitted in Q1. And you might say only two were submitted, you know, why is that? Were we not submitting to everything? Are we not fitting the needs? That's really not the answer. The number of RFIs that we received dramatically dropped the first quarter, and I did do some research and kind of looked at Las Vegas, I looked at Phoenix, and they actually received almost 20 in quarter one, so EDC Utah did not receive that many, so hence the lower number.
How many stages are there?
You know, I kind of say three or four, but I mean, we're kind of waiting on that one that's in the fourth stage on a final decision. So, you know, we were told a month ago, a couple of weeks, and then we're, so we're still kind of waiting on that, so we'll see. And then GOEO, we submitted two, and then we're in the second stage evaluation on two RFIs, so hopefully we'll have some news. Not all of them are huge. There's one that's currently, I guess you could say, in the slow cooker right now, that isn't so much a large capital investment, but it could be a significant number of high-paying jobs. So that would actually be quite exciting. We're also working with the county to see if there's any kind of incentives they could bring for that as well. The Broadway property, so this is the 126 North Broadway property, this is the former Broadway Heritage apartment site, and, you know, it's no news that the temporary fence was installed. We're still waiting on some final items from the State's Brownfield Program and some kind of environmental study work. And it says awaiting building removal, and, you know, you can stop holding your breath because the time has come. The track was being delivered tomorrow morning, and then the removal will start on Monday of next week. So that's exciting. Also next week, on the 17th of May, is the Broadway Street Party Public Workshop. So, you know, spread the word far and wide, and Shiloh and Clarissa and the mayor's office, they have done well in getting the word out and sharing flyers, but that's from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 17th. So bring your family, invite your friends from everywhere. Broadway will be closed in that little section, and there will be food trucks, there's gonna be, I guess you call it temporary street chalk mimicking some urban designs. There will also be supposedly some plants and things like that, and to kind of mimic some different streetscape. And then there will also be a survey that will be open to the public and to kind of get some public feedback. So that'll be an exciting event, and it's right after the Take Pride Tuilla Day at the museum, so the timing, you know, it couldn't be better. And then on the Main Street Commission, the wayfinding signs have finally been completed, and that was kind of a collaboration, too, with Public Works, they were able to get those installed. There's a total of five of them. So that's exciting. It's been a year in the process, but, you know, working with UDOT, some things are kind of archaic in their processes, so sometimes it takes a while, but they are finally up. And then we had our second meeting that occurred in this quarter, and we are working, and myself and Councilwoman Manzio, it's technically in this quarter, but we just attended the Utah Main Street Workshops, so we're working on our transformation strategy for the next two years. And then we also, I submitted the quarterly report to the Utah Main Street Association the last quarter and to Main Street of America. And then social media, this is for Facebook and Instagram with Shiloh and Clarissa handle, and you'll see an increase in link clicks, an increase in follows, an increase in page views, and a large increase in follows. And then you'll also see an increase in impressions for LinkedIn, and you might say, you know, why is Facebook's increase and Instagram's increase is not quite as large as last quarter? But that's because with the holidays and all the different events that occur over that time. So compared to that quarter, it doesn't seem as impressive, but, you know, it's still nonetheless an increase. And then the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's currently kind of getting in the design phase, we're working with EDC Utah to try to design it and have it be very much so a separate strategic plan. If you look at it right now, it kind of falls in and looks into the, you know, the city's comprehensive community development plan, but this, it really needs to be separate. So I'm really working on that kind of visual separateness when it comes to identity. Any suggestions or questions?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Will you go back to the Founder's Point businesses? You went through that so fast, I was furiously trying to write all the businesses that are coming, and I just wondered, could we look at that again?
Yeah, and it's in their packet, right?
Uh-uh.
Is it not in there? No. I'll email it to you as soon as we're done.
Okay. That's great.
That's one we get a lot of questions about, or I do. I shouldn't speak for all of you, but...
And I know everybody still keeps saying Chick-fil-A, Dutch Bros, neither one of those have been confirmed yet, so.
Okay. Someone just asked me that exact question yesterday.
Yeah.
Email it to all of us, John.
What'd you say?
Email it to all of us, please.
Yeah, but hey, you know, Zhao, Zhao and Zupas is a big one, people are happy about that.
And Zupa, okay. I also have another question, if you don't mind. You have the weight...
Zhao and Zupas.
What'd you say?
I said, what are they?
It's like salads, soups, chocolate-covered strawberries, people are into that.
Have to try it out.
Yeah.
I am.
Zhao is Asian.
They're both good.
You know, but I went to Chili's when I was in Cedar City this past weekend, first time ever been in a Chili's, and I was telling this one, this is not bad.
See?
I had never been in a Chili's before, but I'm like, oh, this is gonna be good.
There you go.
I'm old school.
You had another question.
I did. Where are the wayfinding signs directing people to?
So just, it depends on where you're at, but so there's one northbound on SR36 just before Vine, and then two southbound, one just before Utah Avenue, and then one just before Vine, and then one eastbound and westbound on Vine just before Main Street. So like if you're on SR36, it would point, you know, to where parking is, to where USU Tuilla is, to where Tuilla Tech is, to where the library is, and then where the museum and golf course is. Those are the main ones.
Excellent. And if I could make a suggestion, I've had one of our residents contact me that lives at the top of Skyline Drive, and that people drive up there looking for Middle Canyon. Now, I know Middle Canyon entrance is the county, but people are in Tuilla City looking for it, and I'm just wondering if we couldn't do something that's a similar...
Yeah, you know what, perhaps we could reach out to UDOT and see if they could do some sort of, you know, green monument sign that would be, you know, a little bit more appropriate. I think the Main Street Commission signs would really, you know, be falling on the wrong term if we were using it for that, but, you know, perhaps we can, you know, reach out to Public Works and try to get them in contact with somebody, and maybe if they deem it to be necessary.
Okay.
So if you, so if the sign's saying the golf course, you just couldn't put underneath the Middle Canyon?
I don't know if you could fit it, maybe you could fit it, I don't know.
Because it's the same direction.
We'll put hashtag, we'll put hashtag MC or something next to the golf course. And if people know, then they'll know.
I would think it's like in Google Maps, but, I don't know, maybe it's people not using...
Maybe people are using the Thomas guy and haven't been updated.
Is, how mu, do you know how many more businesses they plan to bring to Founder's Point? I mean, I can see the growth, but...
Yeah, so there, so the Cafe Zupas and Zhao are gonna be on the northern kind of tier of the development, so kind of closer to where the Wendy's and the 7-Eleven are. That's where originally they were gonna have a little, they were gonna have the Dutch Brothers right there. But then with the access off of 1,000 North, Dutch Brothers was not a fan of that, so to my understanding, they're still looking for somebody right there, but otherwise, it's pretty full.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Exciting.
Very exciting. I hope residents will refer to this when they are asking about a Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, and you know what? And for the record, I love it when people reach out. We have people coming up to the mayor's office asking questions, people calling all the time, and, you know, we're your best source, you know. Facebook, you know, it's polluted, so call us.
Good choice of words. I like that, it's polluted. All right, any other comments? Thanks, John, that was great. You're doing great work, too, we appreciate it. Okay, item 10 is a Resolution 2025-26, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Excel General Contracting for the demolition and removal of a city-owned building at 126 North Broadway presented by John Perez.
Yeah, so this is for, like I just mentioned, that's gonna be starting tomorrow, the track was coming tomorrow, and the building is being removed starting on Monday. So this was an agreement with Excel General Contracting, and I really must say that, you know, the credit and outside-of-the-box thinking from the mayor and myself and from Shiloh about not just taking the word from an environmental consultant, we saved over $340,000 with this contractor opposed to what we were recommended was the gold standard. And we were able to actually get an environmental test done on the building that inside, that actually kind of removed any concerns relating to any potential, you know, adversely causing substances, if I would use that term. So very exciting, and it's important to note that this, that no bidding was required for this because Excel is a state-approved contractor, so that's why this didn't go out for bid, and it's just here for your approval since it was for, since it was over the $30,000 established in the city policy.
Okay, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-26, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving and ratifying an agreement with Excel General Contracting for the demolition and removal of the city-owned building at 126 North Broadway.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 11 is Resolution 2025-28, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement with Cash Valley Electric Company for the installation of a traffic signal system at the intersection of 2,000 North, Northwood Street and Aaron Drive presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Good evening, council. My ladies are still asleep, so I'm having a hard time moving. Before you this evening is an agreement, Resolution 2025-28, was the resolution for to install a traffic signal at the intersection of 2,000 North and Aaron Drive. I do want to kind of go through and just highlight a few things from the corridor study that was done on this section of roadway that goes from SR36 to Barra Boulevard. The study was completed in November of 2023. It was noted that the hospital access is nearly operating at a poor level of service, and it will likely be in a poor level of service when the new high school opens up, which is slated for August of 2025. So with that, we had to look at some options of what to do at the Aaron Drive and 2,000 North intersection. As you know, one goes down Aaron Drive, the other goes into Mountain West Hospital. As I go through just some of the things that we looked at in the study, we talk about traffic signals and talk about some other things that we looked at. Kind of shows a warrant, when we get to the warrant, what was warranted, I'll get to that kind of later down the list a little bit. But the first one was a traffic signal. The signal was considered, and based on projected volumes, it is not anticipated that the signal would be warranted based on the three volume warrants that are usually typically needed for a traffic signal. There was also not enough crashes in that intersection to warrant a traffic signal, which requires at least five or more crashes that could be corrected by the use of a traffic signal within a single 12-month period. A roundabout was also looked at, which was not feasible as queues. From SR36 would back into it, jamming the roundabout, which would result in local gridlock during peak hours. An Aaron Drive split, basically blocking off Aaron Drive, and so that all traffic would have to go down Aparicio and 1860 North and would not have any access onto 2,000 North, which we figured would have an, would have an effect with Maverick and the nearby offices that are close by, and so that one was not looked at. Restricted left-turn lane, so basically making it a right-in, right-out, extend the median down the street a quarter of a mile, and doing just right-in and right-out. That means hospital traffic would have to turn westbound down to the roundabout, circle around the roundabout, and come back up if they were gonna head south on SR36 or north on SR36. Hospital access to SR36, so that means the hospital putting in an access on 36, which could be a problem as being close to the 2,000 North and SR36 signal, as well as trying to get, we would not be able to get that alighted traffic signal there to, for that hospital access. A north connection going out to 2,200 North, which is accessing a private road, that's the road that goes across the east side of Home Depot, which is private, so we don't, can't have any say what happens to that road. There'd have to be some work with the property owner to get that access. That could bring access over to 2,400 North as well with that. Shifted access, shifting the main hospital access west down 2,000 North, possibly by the care center, and giving a new access and disfunneling all that access down and closing off the hospital access at Aaron Drive. And then the last option is the emergency signal. Now, this goes back to a traffic signal, but it operates as an emergency signal in the MUTCD guidelines, and so that it caters to emergency vehicles, but also helps with traffic flow. With the emergency signal, it requires two things to be done. One is preemption has to be implemented for emergency vehicles and peer-to-peer communication with the 2,000 North and SR36 signal. So the plans, as we kind of went through and kind of put this traffic signal together, we looked at the plans, and we worked with UDOT on the 2,000 North and Aaron Drive signal, and also with the UDOT Fiber Group. We get approvals from UDOT and UDOT Fiber, and this signal has got a fiber connection running from the signal at Aaron Drive to the SR36 signal. In the March 19th City Council meeting, the UDOT invoice was approved for the parts order from the UDOT warehouse. The order was submitted to UDOT on March 24th. The item on your agenda today is for the install work that Cash Valley would provide to get the signal installed. So with that, that's the resolution before you tonight, and to approve that agreement to move that installation project forward. I can answer any other questions that you might have, you know, kind of went through that briefly.
Is there, this intersection's a really bad intersection. I work at the hospital, a lot of people don't go to that exit because it's so difficult to turn left. And then the ambulance, I've worked in the emergency room, and moving the entrance farther away from the emergency, or, yeah, from the emergency room is not a great idea. So I recognize the challenges with this. I wonder if we could do multiple things, like still have an SR36 access to the hospital. I've brought that up to the administration at the hospital before, and I don't know if that's driven by Mountain West, or is it driven by UDOT, or who?
Well, Mountain West would have to do the install, they would have to get approvals from UDOT to add that. UDOT said they only do a right-in, right-out. They wouldn't allow for like a signal.
Yeah.
So that's kind of hampers that access a little bit, but it's one possibility they could do, but the hospital would have to put that in.
I just think multiple ways of trying to address this is going to be needed, and I, I have some reservations about the light with the timing, but I don't see what the other options are, so. That's not really a question, but kind of my thought process. I don't know if anyone else has questions or concerns.
I have concerns also. I, I worry about the ambulance being able to get into the hospital with the light there because of traffic. I mean, I was just at a different stoplight in Tuilla the other day, and there was traffic stopped in every lane, ambulance came up behind, and there was no way for the ambulance to get past because everybody was stopped at the stoplight, so, and that's on SR36. So I worry with it being so close to the intersection. So I worry with it being so close to the intersection and then right there, and there's queuing in every lane all the ti, like 100% of the time. So they'd have to wait for the light to actually change in cars to move to get in.
That's what the preemption, that's why the preemption is needed, so that it could help move that traffic through. So with the ambulance coming, if they're using the preemption, that's going to make it green. It's going to make it all green, so all that traffic can go.
Can go.
So hopefully that traffic goes and just not stops, and, you know, hopefully they get out of the way and.
It's a lot of hope.
You know, yeah. And that's with any intersection.
Right.
That's with any intersection, you know, but that's, that's what we want to push is the preemption and making sure that they have access to do that. Now, there's a new protocol that's coming out with UDOT this year on the preemption, a new preemption that they're doing that's supposed to help clean a lot of this stuff up, and that's going, they're putting that into effect on all of the SR 36 signals. And so we're, we're going to use that same protocol for all of our signals as well. So, and the state's putting that out, and they're saying there should hopefully by summertime, by the end of summer, that all the SR 36 signals have that new preemption in place.
And that means they'll all turn green.
Well, that means, yeah. That means when, yeah, the emergency vehicle, the emergency vehicle has control of what they can do and what they can't, you know, what happens with that signal. And so whatever that crew is on that vehicle and how they're going to handle that when they're going through, so it's up to them to kind of navigate that preemption and what they want, and if they need that light to turn green so they can get through it, that's, you know, that's, that's up to the driver of that vehicle. But it, there's a new process that's coming out to play that's all done now with the radio network with the UDOT signal that's not being done with some old technology that they've been using. So that's all supposed to change, and a lot of the UDOT signals are going to that.
So the light coming out of the hospital will have a green arrow or will, will there be any arrows, I guess, like?
Yeah.
Turn lanes?
Yeah, it'll have, it's because it's got the, the turn lanes on it now, so it'll have the, the arrows on it.
Yeah.
And so it will help kind of move that. They're still yielding to traffic. For the most part, that if you're, if you're heading west or eastbound, more than likely it's going to be green for most of the time being. It's only going to turn red if there's left-hand turns coming out of the hospital or out of Aaron Drive. If people are making right-hand turns, it's not going to turn for those guys. It's only going to turn for those making lefts. And then it's going to be a short period of time because we're going to try to keep the east-west traffic flowing as fast, as much as we can through there.
So if they're queuing in the right lane on Aaron, is the sensor good enough to know that they're in the right lane and not trying to turn left?
Yeah, yeah. The new technology, those sensors really can tell the right lane, the left lane, the straight lane, where traffic is, where it needs to, to move traffic. They'll have a connection from that signal, fiber connection to the SR 36 UDOT signal, and that will be fiber. It's not radio, it's fiber, so it'll always have that 24/7 communication. You know, if the radio goes down, sometimes the radios go down, you'll lose that connection, and then it kind of operates on its own. This one will have a fiber connection with that signal, so it would always be connected 24/7.
Hopefully it works. I, I know I was, when we did the 1,000 North and First East signal, being close to Main Street, I was concerned about that, but ultimately it seems to work pretty good.
Yeah, this one's a little closer, but yeah.
Yeah, this is closer, but still.
Yeah, and we use Mike Wright with Pine Top as our maintenance, signal maintenance guy, and Mike's been doing this for years, and he's really good at making these things function the way they need to function. And he's done that with 100 East. We're still working some kinks out with 520, but we found that we needed to do the, the turn lanes for 520, so we're going to install those here shortly.
And hopefully with 2,400 North, when the school opens, that's supposed to be open. Hopefully that takes some of the pressure off of 2,000 North. May, I don't know, maybe it'll increase it somehow. You never know.
I think it'll help.
Yeah, and you're going to have traffic.
SR 36 sooner.
Yeah, you're going to have traffic on both of those. You got a new high school now.
It's going to be a lot of traffic.
Yeah, people going to that new high school, so I think it's going to have traffic on both legs.
Council, we did reach out to the school district and got their school bus plan, and there will be a significant lower number of buses that will use the 2,000 North. They're sending them other directions, so that is, that's a good one. That's good, and we have, that was considered in the study. So, we hope.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-28, a resolution of the Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Cash Valley Electric Company for the installation of a traffic signal system at the intersection of 2,000 North Street and Aaron Drive.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
I'm going to vote aye, but I have serious reservations. I'm, I'm concerned about the placement, but I'll, I'll vote aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 12 is Resolution 2025-30, a resolution of the Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Speakman's Concrete Service LLC for the repair of the City Shops Foundation presented by Jamie Grandprey.
This resolution is for our city fleet building located at Public Works Campus. Over the years, the building's kind of taken some damage from just the freeze thaw cycles and salt and the snow, the rain, and over time it's cut some foundation to kind of deteriorate a little bit. And so we've kind of went out to bid to get a contractor on board to go and make some changes, to fix some of the foundation, to put some concrete aprons in, just to kind of help bring the building back to life a little bit over the next, for the next few years, hopefully several years. And so with this, we got three bids, as you can kind of see in, in your packet, we received three bids. One was really low and did not turn everything in to make his bid not, make his bid responsive. We had two other bids that did comply and turned everything in that needed to be turned in. Speakman's in the amount of $158,187.65 with the contingency, I don't know, yeah, contingency of $30,000 to make those repairs. I bring that to you tonight for its approval. And can I answer any questions if you have any questions?
This is pretty extensive, then, to the.
It is pretty extensive. We got probably a good one-quarter of the one section that underneath that you can actually go and see underneath the building, and it's just floating.
Wow, that's not good.
And I got several blocks at the low, the first few blocks at the grade line that are just deteriorated out where it's paper-thin, the CMU block is just paper-thin.
Is that contingency higher than normal on that one?
It's a, it's about 5%. We usually do about 5%.
How much did you say it was?
Thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, 30,000. Is that, I think that's like 5%. That's usually what we do.
Okay.
So, yeah.
How much was the total bid? 165?
Yeah, 158.
158?
158, 187.
So 30,000 is 20%, right?
20%.
Is that the contingency, though, or is that, are you reading in the resolution?
Oh, sorry.
That's the threshold for it to come to the council.
I turned off my computer because I had read this earlier, so then when he said that, I'm all confused because it didn't seem right.
I don't need, I don't see the contingency.
We might have not have done a contingency on this one.
I don't see it written in the resolution, but.
Usually it's 5%, you're right. And that was, I was, I'm not, real smart at math, but it seemed like it was wrong.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Jamie. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-30, approving an agreement with Speakman's Concrete Service LLC for the repair of the City Shops Foundation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 13 is Resolution 2025-34, a resolution of the Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Strong Excavation LLC for the 700 South Waterline Replacement Project presented by Jamie Grandprey.
So this resolution is for a 16-inch water line on 700 South from SR 36 to about Coleman. This is a replacement. This is a transmission line that comes from our tanks up at the top of the east side of Tulsa down to the airport wells, so well 6, 7, and 8 are the old airport wells. So it goes, we're not going quite to that point, we're only going down to Coleman, but it's that transmission line that goes from those airport, airport wells to the tanks. That line between Coleman and SR 36 is an old steel line. We are on it several times a year, fixing links on it. It's one leak away from probably blowing up and being done with, and so we just are trying to get a new 16-inch line installed and getting, getting it replaced before we end up having to come to you with a big, huge emergency repair. This went out to bid. We received several bids for this project, and we had the lowest responsible bidder who checked out. We checked references, and he checked out, and so we want to award this to Strong Excavation LLC. Just bear with me, Dave, in the amount of $1,135,688.32 with a contingency of $57,000.
That one's in there.
That sounds more like it. A lot of money.
Yeah.
The big old pipe though.
But, yeah.
Well, I'm not going to say anything about this one because if, if, if this blew out like you just threw out there earlier, it would probably flood my place, so let's get it fixed.
Your house would be gone.
House more, too.
I'm lower than 700, so. Let's get this fixed.
So this is the water line, and then the road is part of this as well, like resurfacing?
Yeah, this is resurfacing, so where they're going to put the new water line in, just resurfacing of that old area. More than likely, we'll come to you next summer to do a, or mill an overlay on that road after we do this water line. It'll really be very, it'll be a very good patch job of several patches that will need to be refixed next summer.
Any other discussion or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-34, a resolution of Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Strong Excavation LLC for the 700 South Waterline Replacement Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Item 14 is Resolution 2025-32, a resolution of the Tulsa City Council approving an agreement, change order number one with Broken Arrow Construction for England Acres Park Phase 3 presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Thank you for this time to present this to you. So as we came, we brought the plan for you before for England Acres Phase 3, we hadn't quite decided at that time whether we were going to tackle this or just leave the ditch in its native condition. The original bid for Phase 3 came back favorable to where what we had estimated the bid was going to come back, it was actually quite a bit less. So we have, we seeked out the Broken Arrow to give us a price on actually putting the riprap in the, in the Devil's Ditch or the Middle Canyon Ditch, Drainage Ditch. And so the resolution that I'm bringing to you this evening is for that work to basically put cobblestone from both the 7th Street of the 520 over to 1,000 North from, and both, both of the box culverts have riprap on both sides of them to protect the, the structure. We'll just continue that to conjoin them, so it just kind of gives a completion of that ditch. So that, that's what the resolution is. It is something that, so this is the right time to bring it to you because if we don't do it at this time in the, the completion of the park, it will be very, very difficult to do it at another time once all the infrastructure's in place. Actually, probably be almost dang near impossible, but we could do it by helicopter, I guess.
That would increase the cost of it.
Or a really, really big crane.
Any questions or comments?
I, I did have a question. Is the cobblestone loose stones?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's very similar to what DR Horton has placed in their portion of the ditch. So it'll be very similar to, to what they've done on their, on their section.
So is it lined or?
No, it's, it's actually just to protect the embankment as water's running down there. And like I said, right now it's just dirt and then native grasses. This will kind of protect it so the erosion doesn't take place that has taken place in other times. And this, I should mention that this is also a park impact project, so it will be paid out of the park, the park impact fees. And the total of the resolution is $56,320.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-32, a resolution of Tulsa City Council approving an agreement, change order number one with Broken Arrow Construction for England Acres Park Phase 3.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 15 is Resolution 2025-33, a resolution of the Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Black &amp; McDonald for installation of lighting along the Devil's Ditch Trail and the England Acres Park Perimeter Trail presented by Darwin Cook.
Thank you, Council. Again, this is a park impact fee project. Again, we're bringing this to you for the same reason that our original bill, our original bid for Phase 3 did come back very favorable. Our original plan was always to place trail lights down the, the north side of the trail on that center kind of diagonal mark that's running down there. So that was, that was always part of our plan. When we got into a better situation, knowing where that Phase 3 was going to cost us, I reached out to Black &amp; McDonald to have them give a price to add the remaining trail lights around the perimeter of the park. So it, it came back at, as, as presented in this resolution, is $298,950. That will actually put perimeter, perimeter trail lights around the entire park and then down that center portion. In the time that that's taken place and this resolution has happened, we did change a little bit of, of the features and a little bit of the way that we're doing the connections that we'll probably even add, we'll be able to add even some trail lights down that other diagonal piece heading to the northeast of the park as well, so. But this will be an added feature of the park, as you know, gets used a lot. It's, it's walked a lot, and so I think this will be a great feature for the completion of this park come this fall, so.
I'm so excited about this because I walk it a lot.
Yes.
And I really hope the little vandals leave the lights alone.
Yeah. We've been, we, we did have, we did put some, for some, what would you call them? Some measures in place for the ones on the trail. We did have some vandal take place that, they did attempt to steal the wire. Fortunately, the measures that we did put in place did work, and our own city electrician was able to go and reestablish that, those trail lights, so. And they've been good ever since, so. I do know that the trail going to the, to the southeast is walked a lot and very appreciated by the, by the public who lives in that area and uses that area, so. And runs on that trail a lot. There's a lot of runners on that trail, so. If you haven't been by the park, it's kind of interesting because we put, most people don't know that we actually put both bridges in at the same time. There's been people that have asked us that if we just barely put the bridge in on the park, but that bridge was actually put in there at the same time the other one was. It's just that because it was so hidden behind all the material on that north side, it was really hard to see, so. But you can really see the bridge, and it is actually a great feature of the park, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-33, a resolution of Tulsa City Council approving an agreement with Black &amp; McDonald for installation of lighting along Devil's Ditch Trail and the England Acres Park Perimeter Trail.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. Item sixteen is Resolution 2025-39, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council approving an agreement with American Ramp Company for the engineering and design of the Tuila Boulevard Bike Park Project presented by Darwin Cook.
Okay, council, I'm kinda excited about this because we, thanks to the Public Works Department, we ended up with a piece of property that's kind of a challenge to develop and do anything with because of the structure that's underneath the fill dirt. So out at the end of six hundred, six fifty north and seven hundred west, there's the old reclamation property that the city owned for many years, and as that new reclamation facility was built, they, the city obviously, it sat there vacantly. Most of the structure was brought to the ground and hauled off, but the deeper foundation stuff has been left on the site and we've been capping that over the last several years.
Several years?
Several, yeah, whatever. So anyway, so we've been trying to figure out how we're gonna make that park work where we won't be able to do foundations or, you know, deep foundations or anything down into the ground. So one of the, one of the number one requests that come into our department is an actual pump track. So if you go to the first slide, oh, well, that is upside down, but.
We can get visual.
Yeah, it's a visual. So you're in a helicopter. So if you don't know what a pump track is, this is not for motorcycles, this is for like BMX pedal bikes. It just has a series of tracks and a series of features to, you know, the goal of the pump track is, is once you get going, that you're actually able to keep your own momentum without pedaling to get through the, through the course. So this is one, this is not our design, this is just a sample of a design. Go to the next slide. There we go, that one's right. So it's kind of, this is another design. This is in Nibley, I believe, that they did this one here. Again, just some features. We have enough space down there that, the reason why we're, we've decided to call this Boulevard Bike Park is because we have enough room to not only do a pump track, but to do a younger kids' bike area to just have them do skills, teach them some skills of pre-pump track type activities to where then they can work up from that bike portion to this. So I'm excited to present this to you. Our goal with this, the reason why we're bringing this to you now, and it is kind of out of our normal budget season, so one of the adjustments, your budget adjustments was to make, make this possible is the American Ramp Company is, their goal is to have the design and everything completed by October so that we can submit this for the Utah Recreation Grant. And so if we can get this completed and done and our design finalized, and that is one of the requirements, is that we have to have a completed design, a completed approved design to apply for the grant, so.
Do we know the size, like this picture right now, is that more the size?
So the total park space that we'll be dealing with is about five point, I think it's about five point two acres, is that right Paul? I think roughly about five point two, five point three acres. So it'll be, it'll be somewhat, it'll be bigger than this one, but maybe not as big as the very first one.
And is it asphalt that they use?
It's actually, it's a poured, it's a similar to asphalt, but it's like a poured-in-place kinda stuff. Very durable, as long as you keep vehicles off of it, will last forever, and it just, you put it in place, they tamp it, it's all hand-installed with carts and everything, and then they shape it. The advantage to this project at that site, as you can tell, it's all up, like everything's doing ramps and doing buildups versus going down into the ground, so.
Where's this park at, do you know? This picture?
That one, it's obviously in Utah, but I can't remember where this one's at. Oh, this might be the one.
Pleasant Grove?
This might be Pleasant Grove.
There's a G on the mountain, it looks like.
Yeah, and then they just, American Ramp just, they have built, I think, seven of them in the state of Utah. They just completed herrymans just a couple months ago, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's, again, this is like one of the number one requests of features that we're missing in our inventory in the parks, so.
I like the variety that we have in our parks, so.
Me too.
The Ninja Course, and then this, adding this on, it'll be a good variety.
Well, and so one of the advantages to this too is we're constantly looking for recreation for older, older youth. This is a great activity for the older youth to try to keep them off of our five to twelve year old playgrounds.
Yeah.
Because those playgrounds, they're designed for the five to twelve year old. So as you know, we're building Ninja Course at England Acres. This is a great activity for them as well, and as long as, depending through, as we work through the grant process and everything, our goal, maybe not the actual bike portion of the park, but definitely the pump track is to actually light it, so.
Good.
Because obviously teenagers tend to be out a little longer than five to twelve year olds.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, you know, this picture is nice because it looks like it's by a community building. I feel like, you know, we're probably gonna have to have restrooms and maybe park benches and some trees and vegetation so that people could sit in the shade and watch and things like that, so.
Yeah, and part, yes, and part of, so in their design plan, they will design part of the restroom, the parking lot, and a pavilion. We haven't decided yet whether we'll do a combined bathroom pavilion building or do a bathroom building with the pavilion. But yes, those features will be at this park as well. This one doesn't, well, I can't, on that one there, I don't know if, we have, or I have expressed to the developer that we, we don't wanna do a lot of turf, but we definitely want to do a lot of trees in the, in the center islands and stuff where we can have trees present, so.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve Resolution 2025-39, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council approving an agreement with American Ramp Company for the engineering and design of the Tuila Boulevard Bike Park Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. Item seventeen is Resolution 2025-40, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council approving an agreement change order number two with Broken Arrow Construction for the construction of Ocker Hills Golf Course Overflow Parking Lot presented by Darwin Cook.
Thank you council. So this change order with Broken Arrow came about through a necessity of, as most of you know, we've completed the Drew Bay Road from Vine to Smelter Road, which is a fantastic addition. In making that completion, this older picture right here kinda demonstrates that before that road was completed, we had quite a bit of perpendicular parking, maybe non-approved, but it was still used that way for the golf course. With the new completion of Drew Bay Road, that perpendicular parking is now gone. So we came into, we've arrived at a situation to where now we have to address that. Back in 2001, when the parking lot, or the clubhouse in the parking lot was built, the use of the population of the city and the use of the facility actually accommodated the level of service that we were delivering at that time. As the population has increased, the level of services with that, with the existing parking lot is kinda hard to maintain. So this resolution is presenting a change order with Broken Arrow to build a parking lot there on the lower part of your screen, so that little dirt parking lot there that used to be the trail parking lot for the county's trailhead is city property, and the resolution is to build that parking lot for an additional parking for the golf course. There will be an entry off, so if you'll go to the next slide, this is, this is the design of the parking lot. Drew Bay's on the lower portion of your screen, and then Vallow on Vine is on the north of the screen. It is a seventy-four stall parking lot. We chose to, this is kind of an unusual change order because it's not attached to England Acres and the change order is to that contract there. Broken Arrow in the last three years has built five parking lots for us. This will actually be a sixth parking lot that they've done for us. We have no issues with any of the work that they've done for us. We are a little bit in a time constraint due to the fact that all the tournaments are starting. We are, the goal is to have this done by June thirtieth, not only for the time because of the tournaments are gonna start picking up, but also for a budget restraint. In our, in our process of qualifying this, this project will qualify for approximately or up to a sixty percent impact, park impact fee project, and then the rest of the money will come out of capital, capital project fund. We are, we are kinda pushing this to, a little aggressively just because we have kinda, we're just, we're entering into like a little safety issue there, trying to find where to, when the tournaments are happening, when the big events are happening, where to put all of our patrons who frequent the golf course, so.
How big is the other parking lot, how many stalls?
The other parking lot is sixty-six stalls.
Okay.
This, this parking lot will also have ADA parking. The other parking lot has three ADA stalls, so this will actually increase our parking to six ADA stalls between both of them. So it'll help immensely, actually. Our other parking lot, the other thing, thanks to Paul and his engineering team, we designed this one with some pull-throughs so that as people are bringing their own golf carts or whatever, we have some pull-through stalls to accommodate trucks with trailers.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I should mention the contract amount is for three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-40, approving an agreement change order number two with Broken Arrow Construction for the construction of Ocker Hills Golf Course Overflow Parking Lot.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. Thanks, Darwin. Item eighteen is Resolution 2025-27, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council authorizing the Tuilah City Purchasing Agent to Dispose of Surplus Personal Property from the Tuila City Police Department presented by Michelle Pitt, the City Recorder.
Thank you. We have some goods that are, we'd like to have you deem surplus. They, in this case, they, the police department has a bunch of bikes, and there is a list attached to the resolution. When we have goods that are valued at a hundred dollars or more, we need to bring them to the council and ask that they be declared surplus. These bikes have been abandoned and they're unclaimed, and they're not evidence in criminal prosecution. The police department would like to donate them to the Salt Lake City Fire Department, and then they'll hold an auction, and then the proceeds go to burn victims. So that's how they'd like to dispose of the bikes if you'll declare them surplus.
It's a lot of bikes.
Yeah.
Over how many years is this?
Gosh, it's been, I think it's been two years.
Two years, okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve Resolution 2025-27, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the Tuilah City Purchasing Agent to Dispose of Surplus Property, the Police Department, which are bicycles.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. Item nineteen is Resolution 2025-29, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council declaring surplus certain technology-related equipment and authorizing its disposal presented by Michelle Pitt.
Okay, this is very similar, they're just IT-related items that we'd like to be declared surplus, and you have a list of those items as well. We keep these items and try to reuse them as much as we can. If we can't reuse them, then we need to dispose of them, we try to recycle as much as we can as well. So that's what we'd like to recommend for this, for the disposal of these items.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve 2025-29, a resolution of the Tuilah City Council declaring surplus certain technology-related equipment and authorizing its disposal.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. Item twenty is our invoices and purchase orders presented by Michelle Pitt.
We just have one tonight, and this is to Thorn Pest Solutions for Treatment for Mosquitos Around Lakes, and it is for, they'll treat the lakes twice per month, so it'll be fourteen times a year, and it is for thirty-two thousand, no, I'm sorry, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred.
Seems like the mosquitoes are better right now, at my house at least.
Better size-wise or better less?
Less, yeah.
Well, they'll be even better after this.
I know, I hope it keeps working, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve the invoice.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Item twenty-one is our minutes from April second, 2025 work meeting and the April second, 2025 business meeting. I thought they looked great, appreciate the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
And Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero, and we're adjourned at eight fifty-three PM.